Nice, so which one we're gonna pick?
Whatever you want.
All right. Start to take a.
You can.
All right, one minute break or something.
Catch your breath.
Yeah.
Yeah, mine says four twenty-nine here on this one, so. Think you got a moment?
All right, good. Yeah. Oh, yeah, four thirty, let's do it. Call to order, our study meeting today is on Tuesday, September twenty-second, I mean, so twenty-seven, twenty-two at four thirty P M. And we are right now in a multi-purpose room. The anchor location right here is thirty-six hundred Constitution Boulevard, West Valley City, Utah, April one-one-nine. And we have Jake's.
No, he'll be here around five.
Okay, yeah, we have five council members present right here and Jake F D C Manu can be here soon. Mayor Ken Landis, she is making basically she is kissing herself tonight. We have approval of minutes, the September, September twenty-twenty-two. So we need a motion and a second for that one.
I move for approval of those minutes.
Okay, we have a motion, we need a second. Okay, we have a motion and secondary there, so all those in favor of this motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay, so this motion passes unanimously. Thank you so much. Review our regular meeting, any question about our regular meeting tonight? If not, we can jump over to item number five, that gonna be item A is the public hearing and gonna be Steve Patrick, I believe. Yeah, Steve Patrick before.
Oh, sorry. We're on the budget opening one, right?
Oh, yeah, 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 the budgets, that right, that right. Sorry, Jim, I just, you know, I live it too fast, everybody.
You're good.
Yeah, yeah. So, so Wayne, you wanna say anything before Jim take over or?
No, that's fine, sir. Jim can go through the budget opening as he normally does. The only introductory comment I'd make is this is the one of the four quarterly ones that we do. Here are the first quarter of the new fiscal year.
Okay, okay, cool, all right.
Great. Thank you for the intro. As he mentioned, for the record, this is the one of four that we do throughout the year. This is the first budget opening and budget opening is defined as a modification to the existing budget. This is done to recognize new revenues, to roll over projects that were not previously completed in the previous fiscal year or to recognize opportunities and take advantage of purchases that were not originally ordered in the original budget. So there's opportunities that come up sometimes that they're covered through these. So the way this is set up is we have, first, we have all the rollovers and these are by definition are grants or else there are projects which were not completed in the previous year. There's a number of those, there's actually twenty-four. And then we have the new opportunities that came through grants and this is new money that was realized after the beginning of the fiscal year. Well, there's a number of those. Then the other ones are the additions and transfers from other departments or divisions which have occurred and I believe all of these expenditures have been considered by the city council beforehand and they've been discussed. So that's it for the general fund. And then in addition to that, we have two budget openings for the agencies. We have the building authority. I'd like to point that one out that we did some. If you'll remember, the court project needed an additional five and a half million dollars to complete the new courts that are being built out and that money is being transferred from the general fund to the building authority. So there's a corresponding authorization for five and a half million dollars in the building authority to recognize that project. And then also there is the purchase and demolition of duplex on Lehman Avenue, which was considered a few weeks ago in the R D A. And that's a summary of the budget openings and I would be more than happy to accept any questions if you had them.
Council, has any questions for him?
I just have one more of like probably education for myself on when you break down some of the budgets, there were transferring and transfer out, some of the transfer in and transfer out said general fund or account balance or but some just said transfer in, transfer out. Is that intentional or how do we know where there was?
It's all, all very intentional and required by law. When money is transferred between any of our major funds or has to be in budget authorization by the city council to do that, those are classified as transfers. And so that's why we list those. So if it looks like nothing really happened, it was a way of moving money, for example, from the general fund to the C I P or from C I P to the general fund to accommodate a purchase that would, that would be better, I guess, better accounted for in that fund. So for example, if money is moved from the general fund to C I P to cover the purchase of a vehicle, it makes more sense that we, we do our major purchases in the build, in the C I P project funds so that we can track those for accounting purposes. Same thing happens with the building authority. Building authority is for the financing of capital projects, usually buildings and money sometimes is transferred between the building authority to accommodate those.
But on the ones where just a transfer and transfer out, is it, can I assume that it's the general fund? Where it's not identified specifically?
Uh, if you, if there's one in here that you had a question on, I'd be more than happy to address that one.
The one I'm looking at right now is, that's on page seventeen for the capital improvements.
Okay, so you're not looking at the, at the footnotes? It would, so if it's number seventeen, that would be. Okay, so is, we, we note the footnotes next to the budget number? So rather than a page number, is that what you're looking at? I'm sorry, I don't have the.
Yeah, it's a page number and there's multiple footnotes, which I just now noticing, but so the transfers in, transfers out has nine footnote nine.
Yeah, so that is the transfer out under the expenditures line of the capital improvement fund, Jim?
Yes, okay, now I've got it.
Yeah, so it's transfers out in the amount of one point five eight seven million with footnote nine, as Will was talking about.
Okay, right. So that, that one point five is actually represents a net number. So if you look at the previous numbers, one point four million dollars that was adopted, one point five is the opening. That is included across several budget openings. That includes the rollover of the fire department. Vehicle purchase that was number, item number nine in the footnotes on the front page is a rollover. And it also, so we got here. I would have to look at the, the actual detail as it gets into that, but the difference there would be a transfer for that vehicle purchase within C I P.
Okay.
You okay, Will?
Yeah.
Okay. So anybody else? If not. Thank you, Jim, I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Yeah, let me move forward. Item number six. Six A, Steve Patrick or is Wayne wanna say something before taking over?
Nope, I'm good on this one, thanks, sir.
No problem.
Hi, good afternoon, council. Put my screen here.
Hey, Steve, before we start, maybe I should have made an introductory comment. Would you go over the, the kind of timing wrinkles we've had with this over the last few weeks, just for remembrance sake?
Yeah, so the originally we were going to have this scheduled on meeting, it was like three weeks ago, but the applicant actually requested that the study meetings and regular meeting be postponed because he was gonna be out of town, so that's why it's, it was pushed back several weeks at the applicant's request, actually. So this, the property in question here is at thirty-nine forty South, fifty-two hundred West. And you can see that there's three properties involved here. And those, those three properties total about ten and a half acres. All the property right now is zoned A, which is the agricultural zone and the requested zoning is the R E zone or the residential estate zone. As a reminder, that zone requires lot sizes that would average about fifteen thousand square feet. Now, here's a close-up of the property. One thing that's a bit unique about the property is there are four stub streets that are up against this property and so and of course you also have the frontage along fifty-two hundred West, so that's one thing that's a little bit unique and that you have all those connecting streets to the property. This map here shows zoning, so the pale green would be the agricultural zone. You can see the R one-eight zone that's on the northwest and south and then you have some R one-ten across the street on the east side of fifty-two hundred West. Just some, some pictures here. So this is, we have several images from the different perspectives here. So this is from this, from the south or looking to the south from the north end of the property. This is from another one of the stub streets, so on the north side of the property looking south. This would be looking west from another one of the stub streets. And then finally, the last stub street on the south end, this is looking to the north. Uh, this is along fifty-two hundred West, you see the improvements are already in there. Uh, looking west across the property from fifty-two hundred West, then one more shot looking to the southwest where you can see the, the joining church here. So the, the applicant actually submitted a couple of different concept plans. So in this first concept plan, there's proposed twenty-five lots and you can see some were fairly large and other ones are a little more narrow. And after, have, have the, after the planning commission who reviewed this concept plan and realizing that they were actually asking for quite a few exceptions on the frontage of the lots. They looked at a different concept, which I'll show here shortly. Just for a little bit of context here, this next image was actually one that was proposed by Ivory Homes several years ago. So Ivory Homes had submitted an application but then they ended up withdrawing that before getting to the city council and so the planning commission just had inquired about that. And so we included this just for reference. So this never made it to the council but was reviewed by planning commission. And then the more, a more recent concept that the applicant submitted where they tried to minimize any exceptions on, on frontages, this one. So it still has twenty-five lots but is just a different configuration than what they had originally submitted. And again, we don't, at this stage of a zone change, don't hold someone to a particular concept, but it's more to give an idea of how many lots would be possible and can they meet, you know, frontage requirements, those, those types of things. I think it's important to point out that our code does require that for zone change that there, there be a development agreement that would accompany a zone change. And so the, the applicant did propose a number of different or a number of different proposals for a development agreement. And, and I'll go through this table here shortly. Uh, the planning commission reviewed those and there were some negotiation back and forth, but in the end, the, the planning commission recommended that the development agreement follow the city's previous housing standards. So to, to put that in context, up until last year, the city's housing standards were what you see in this fourth column on the, the table that's here on the screen. So those are the standards up until last year. However, the, the state legislature did pass a bill last year that required the city to remove many of the housing standards that we had in place at the time. And so that's when we say previous housing standards, that's what we're referring to is the standard we had in place up until last year before the legislature made that change. And so many of the zone change we've done over the last year, we've still used our previous housing standards in the development agreement for new housing developments, even though those standards aren't in our ordinance, because we can still have higher standards, if you will, in a development agreement. So that's something the city still can do. So what this table shows is on a number of different items that we would typically address in, in a development agreement, like house size and materials. Uh, two different proposals that the applicant made versus what, what, or how those compared to what our previous housing standards were. So you can see, for example, on materials, the applicant had proposed some additional materials that our previous housing standards wouldn't have, have had. The, really the main difference between the, the applicant's first option and the second option is the first option has larger home sizes than the second option, but on, on that last line item, they're under design treatments. They're proposing a, a higher point value that for several of the design features. So to explain what that looks like, in our, in the city's design standards, we have our previous design standards. We had a, a list of features and each feature had a point value associated with it and, and someone had to have a certain or a minimum number of points in order to meet the standards. So the, and this first option that the developer had proposed to use the same list of features but basically added or put more points to each feature, which would mean they'd have to have fewer features, if that makes sense. Uh, in the second option, they proposed use the same design treatments that we had in our previous housing standards, but then lowered that, the house size. So that's kind of the trade-off they had proposed between the first and second option. As I mentioned, the planning commission, they did recommend approval of the zone change, but in their recommendation, they recommended that we use the city's previous housing standards as the, as the standard for the development agreement. However, the applicant declined to, to sign the development agreement, which we would typically have before the council with, with a zone change application. And so they're still wanting to essentially propose either option one or option two at this point. So this one's a bit unique in that normally we would have for you a signed development agreement that would accompany the application, but in this case, the applicant is proposing something or, or at least requesting something different from what the planning commission had recommended. And I can, I'm happy to answer any questions. I know there's a lot of, there's a lot of the history on this one and some nuance to it as well.
Any question for you?
Steve, it looks like also he's wanting to do two-car garages. And then my other comment is on the allowed materials. I am not a fan of thin brick or panels, brick and stone panels. Those where they don't wear well and they look really bad when they have damage on.
Right.
These were kind of a hard no for me.
The, some of the members of the planning commission shared that concern.
So why we don't, sorry, sorry, you know why we don't allow stucco in our previous design standards?
That was actually something a, a previous council wanted. We've, we've had that prohibition since I believe twenty fifteen as far as no, no stucco. So prior to that, we did allow it. But I believe at the time that was seen as a kind of a step or, so it was around that same time that we were, we included like fiber cement siding. So I think at the time it was seen as that was a step up from stucco, so trying to, again, raise the bar, if you will, on, on the standards.
Great. Yeah, I remember the discussion with stucco and to, to our council, then we felt that, that stucco was kind of like the new aluminum siding that, you know, became really popular and, and here and now that, now it's stucco. And I, I think it wears better than, than siding, aluminum siding, but but we don't have a lot of stucco, especially the stucco that's being applied now. That's, that's old, you know, what does it look like when it's old? And, and we had seen some homes where it was wearing and, and not looking good, but, but neighborhoods that had brick, those seemed to hold up better for longevity than, than these other materials. Am I, am I capturing that right, Tom and Don? Do you, is that what you remember?
Yeah, yeah. I remember that. Any other questions for him?
I have a question. So what if our council is okay with it being R E but not with this development agreement? What's our, what, what's our strategy? What's our steps?
So a couple of choices. So the council always has the ability to, to deny a zone change, right? You have that discretion. An alternative would be to further negotiate and see if maybe there's a, perhaps another, a third option, perhaps, that the, the applicant would be amenable to.
So we have two weeks before we actually vote?
Correct.
Well, for me, I'm, I'm not satisfied with, with those allowed materials in the proposal. And, and I think we need to keep the house size and three-car garage as we've proposed in our R E zone.
Did he know that? So he know that, right?
About what our, what our previous standards were, yes.
He's a flexible guy? I mean, he's, can he, he will, willing to negotiate with deal with us? Or he very tell us about it?
So as we were working with the applicant, with the planning commission, earlier versions of his proposal were lower than the standards, so, so he's willing to negotiate to this point. And so perhaps he may be willing to make some additional changes if we give that, give that direction. But at least so far, he's been willing to make some changes based on earlier, earlier proposals.
Can you send us the, what is the waiting he's trying to to target for the design movements? So you kind of have an idea of what he's gonna skip on?
Well, if we don't have any more questions for Steve, you have?
I'll be in there, Steve.
I was, I was thinking, I, I wasn't able to look it up right now, but I believe that is. Right, so the, the two and
is waiting near towards the end.
And I, we put this table together just to try to simplify because those are fairly lengthy, but but yeah, the, the tables that are in those documents include what the, the point values would be.
It looks like he didn't have a real fun time with the planning commission either. Because there's three meeting minutes on here.
Right, so in one situation, there again, he had actually requested that it be continued. But in another case, the planning commission was just really struggling with the proposal and, and wanting to, again, further negotiate.
Steve, the general question, maybe it's related to this, but in my full-time employment, we invest in a lot of developments and we see a lot where the city council will deny it, the zone change. Now there's lawsuits beginning to crop up against certain cities. Is according to the article, cities are hiding behind zone changes to prevent certain developments when coming into their city. Just like concerned that should be looking at or?
Steve, before we make any comment there, and great question, Will. I was gonna, and I hate to put her on the spot, but I was gonna call Nicole to kind of give you the feel for where that legislative history's been in the last year or two kind of reiterate actually some of the things Steve just said, which is the wide latitude you have of the zoning change side, but yeah, where some of the pitfalls might be on the other side of that question too.
Yeah, it's a really good question and we, as a city, have always been very much in the, in the conversation at the legislative level and also respected, respective of the private property rights. So we, we tend to move along those lines. However, we do have a situation where as a state, there's a lot of concern, exactly as you've mentioned, as it sits right now and typically in states that are the type of state that we are, ours is called Hutchinson Rule. You're probably familiar with Dillon Rule. From a legal perspective, as you've heard us talk about, uh, zone changes are discretionary. They're legislative actions and there is not a a legal action really that can be taken that would be successful in the courts as it sits right now with regards to a denial of a zone change. You as a council have the ability to make that legislative decision for any reason or no reason, as long as it's not a protected reason. Those protected reasons are the ones we talk about often in all kinds of things like sex, race, religion, those kinds of things, right? So for any other reason besides the protected reasons, you as a council could decide not to rezone and that would be a comfortable position to be in from a legal perspective. As we look at where the state is headed and really what Mr. Pyle was leading to is there is a lot of conversation every year with regards to where should we be as localities regarding zoning requirements, where is it appropriate for us to be as, as cities on those things? And I think as a city, historically, we have been very balanced, but also very concerned with the things you've already mentioned tonight, sustainability in our housing stock. And we have a unique position, different from many cities, in that we know what unsustainable housing that was built prior to these kinds of things look like. And we know what that requires to come back from. So many of the things, many of the actions you've seen us take and many of the conversations we've had legislatively come from a real place of experience and many legislators are respecting of that because we can bring them here. And we can show them the difference between those two types of things. So for a long time, those types of regulations were very respected by the legislature and understood. The pressure of affordable housing that we see now and the the increase as that continues to ramp up and some of the some of the concerns that are around land use have led to legislation in the last, I'd say, seven to ten years that have ramped up the increasing concerns. It's a very pertinent question. There, I've heard everything from we should take away the ability of cities to zone like some of our sister states have done to let's, let's let's go a little more cautious here. And I think our legislature is very wise. I think that they study these things. I think they understand them and I think when there's a position to be had, for the most part, they do hear that. I see a shifting from that. So there is always caution. I think we, we tend to act very prudently as a city and always have. We've seen developers as our partners in the city and the legislature has respected that as it relates to us. But we have also been aggressive in protecting our housing stock, protecting the finite uh, land that we have left and it is very finite here. And the council has always directed us to be in that place and I feel confident in expressing that to the very exact question, do I think the legislature is leaning more towards limiting our abilities in the land use realm? Absolutely. Do I think that means we'll lose our ability to zone? I don't know about that. I think that that's a, that's a pretty far bridge. Uh, anything short of that, I think there's plenty of conversation about that. So hopefully that answers the question and also where, where you wanted me to head, sir. Okay, thanks.
Thanks, Nicole. Steve, I think the applicant will probably argue that that in today's economy, they won't be able to build a home to that standard and sell it at a profit. How is Newton Farms doing? Do you have any feedback on, from them or?
At this point, I believe, and I can confirm this with the developer for next week, I believe they're sold out at this point. I don't believe all the lots are, are built yet, but I believe all the lots have been sold. But I can, I can confirm that. And the, the developer, we know well and can, and kind of get an update there as far as how that's going.
I know that the developer.
I know that the developer is, is a. Is working on a. On a lot, a development just on the east side of fifty-two hundred west there. Is that RE? That's not RE, is it?
That one, it's not. It, it, uh, it was just under two acres. Sure, our code does allow smaller pieces like that, uh, to be. Uh, I believe that one was R one eight in that case.
But are the homes in the development agreement held to our previous housing standards?
Uh, some, yes. So if you recall, that one had, um, lots in the back that were flag lots. Those were, and then the ones in front were a, a, a step down, but not, not substantially, but it was a step down from that.
Well, I, if I'm wrong correctly, if I'm wrong, you, you mentioned about you want to be, uh, three car garage, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I like that too, to be honest with you. It's hard to fire a big pocket land like this, ten acres. Now I'm saying, gonna make it special. Although, uh, standard, I think we should do that. Yeah. Any question for him? No, and then we're gonna move forward for, um, item number seven, resolution. Twenty-two dash one forty-six, that one gonna be Colin Jacobs. Before she can take over for this one, you wanna say anything?
Uh, I might just cover this one unless Chief Fosmo, were you planning on covering this or you'd like, sir? Nope, go right ahead. If you're already marching on up there, that means you were ready to go, so you go ahead.
Evening council, I'm not Colleen Jacobs. Uh, I'm Mike Fosmo, I'm, uh, Special Operations Bureau Chief with the Police Department, filling in for Chief Jacobs this evening. Um, and also asked to cover, uh, this agenda item, which is seeking authorization. The city to, uh, enter, I guess, re-enter into an agreement, longstanding agreement we've had with the Utah Attorney General's Office. Internet Crimes Against Children Task Force. This is something we've participated in for numerous years, um. It's a task force that's comprised of, uh, many, many local law enforcement entities. It's also a nationwide effort. Uh, most states, uh, in the United States have similar programs. The mission of the task force is, is pretty self-explanatory. It's, uh, deals, uh, focuses on sexual exploitation, enticement. Uh, manufactured distribution of child pornography, um, and, uh, all online internet-based type of offenses. Um, we currently assign, uh, three investigators to the task force over and above their general duties. They participate in these types of cases and they receive tips, uh, through their, uh, through their contacts with the Attorney General's Office. So the only difference in this year's agreement versus previous years is, is funding, uh. Our previous year fiscal year was sixteen thousand dollars. We were awarded in grant funding. This year it's twelve thousand. My understanding for the difference, uh, in that is just what the DOJ has awarded the Utah Attorney General's Office and that trickled down to the participating agency. So. Uh, twelve thousand dollars is our, is our, um, figure this year to participate, which covers our expenses, overtime, uh, salary expenses. Specialized training and equipment for participation in the task force. Any questions for me?
Any question for you? None? Okay, good.
Sir, did you have anything else to add?
Uh, maybe it's one note, maybe you already covered it and I just missed it. How long have we been involved with the task force?
You know, I asked that question today, I, seems to me at least fifteen years. Part of it, but at least, at least ten, but yeah, I think it's, it's more than that.
And is this every year you come up and you?
Yeah, every year changes just based on the grant funds, um, and it's, it's gone, it's starting to trickle down year over year. Uh, for whatever reason, and so there is discussion at the Utah Attorney General's Office about how to get those numbers back up. To, uh, focus our efforts on those cases a little bit more, but this year we're sixteen to twelve thousand.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, uh, next item is twenty-two dash one forty-seven, it's Nancy Day. You wanna say something before she's taking over or?
Uh, yes, sir, just that Nancy is not with us tonight, so Mr. Jason Erickson will be covering her item for me.
Good afternoon, uh, Mayor Potem and Council, uh, Jason Erickson, Parks and Recreation. Uh, just kind of a little history with this, uh, so Westridge Golf Course was built, uh, in nineteen ninety-one. Uh, that's when the existing pro shop, uh, was built. In two thousand and twelve, two thousand thirteen, during the elite realignment, uh, or during the alignment of. Mount View Corridor, uh, we rebuilt the golf course and rebuilt the maintenance building and things of that nature, but we didn't do anything with the pro shop. Uh, we did replace, uh, the carpeting on the decking, but that was, uh, pretty much about it, um.
Carpeting is worn out.
The carpeting is, the carpeting is in need of replacement for sure. So, um, if any of you have been up there, uh. You've, you've probably noticed that the, the carpet is wearing out, that the seams are separating, uh, that the, the plywood flooring is kind of. Getting some divots in it, you know, and so it's, you know, it's just wearing out. And so, um. So what this, uh, what this is for is, is, is. It's for replacing, replacing the decking material on both, on both decks, both the main floor and the upper floor. Uh, removing and replacing the handrail, which when it was installed was, uh. I believe, it had to meet code when it was installed, right? But it doesn't meet code anymore. And so we're having to redo the rail. Um, and so then we'll be putting a PVC covering on it, which will, uh, be a lot more weather resistant. Uh, uh, right now the carpet kind of goes up to the edge and, and we have been getting some water leaks that have been going down, so. Uh, so there, that's, that's all part of the bid. So we did put it out for bid. We got two bids, one from Action Roofing. And one from CMH Construction Company. Uh, we, we picked Action Roofing, uh, they were the lowest responsible bidder. Uh, they've got good experience in, in using these materials, um, and, uh, and so we, we have moved forward with them. Uh, well, with your approval, um. So, yeah, so we, so we hope to, to decrease or eliminate any leaks that might happen on the, on the decking by doing this. And like I say, it is both, it is both decks. It's the upper deck and the, and the lower deck. So, any questions?
Any question for him?
We approve this, you know, when it'll be completed?
He will, they will do it this fall.
Um, I have a question for you.
Yes, sir.
So this contract we have is for roofing and also for carpeting combined?
So it's not carpeting, so it's a PVC, it's like a PVC material, but they actually weld the seams of it together. Um, it's, um, so they'll re, they'll tear out the existing carpet and the existing, uh, plywood decking. And, and replace the plywood decking and they put this PVC material down that's, that's weatherproof. And then, uh, and they'll bring it up on the wall, uh, and, and seal it against the wall and then they'll have a drip edge that so it's not, it can't go underneath. So there will not be carpet down. It will be this kind of textured PVC material.
Okay, how big for the roof? How many thousands square feet?
I don't know. Do you know how many square feet it is?
So, I'll just talk, I'll top my head. We are looking about twenty-four hundred square feet of decking material that needs to be replaced. Um, as Jason was saying, it is, everything that's underneath the carpeting right now is becoming delaminated. Moving around, which is causing us a pretty big safety concern, especially whenever we're getting a hundred people up there on that deck standing, um. Through this last year, there was a spot that actually fell through, uh, so we're wanting to get rid of all the decking material that's on there so we can inspect, uh. Choices that go through, so.
Okay. Twenty-four hundred square. Right, the twenty-four hundred square feet for the roof, correct?
Yep.
Alright, for the roof?
For the, for the decking.
Decking material, yes.
The deck, okay, the roof?
Roof is great.
Yeah, we're not doing the roofing. It's just.
For the deck, right, okay. For the deck.
So I had one question, so to clarify my own mind.
This is Brian Abney with the, with the.
Uh, new textured PVC covering. So what are we talking about? Are we talking about like some sort of a, some form of a Trex type decking or? Is it nothing like that at all or what's it gonna look like?
Thick membrane roof.
Okay.
It's, it's probably three times as thick as a roof membrane.
Okay.
In a PVC, right?
Absolutely. So it's a sixty mil product, um, they get played over the top of it.
And what's under that, what's underneath that?
It, 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 that's the waterproof material that, so there's this plywood and glue underneath.
So it'll be plywood decking under that too. Okay, alright.
Know how it'll hold up for golf spikes?
Yes, uh, it's a, I mean, the material is called Duradeck. It's a very durable system. Uh, the PVC is, I mean. We use it all over the place in construction fields. Um, a lot of time we bury it. Um, it is a very durable material, so it's, it's just like any other PVC. It's just more malleable than a, than a piece of piping would be.
We use it a lot in rooftop decks, that, so it's used a lot.
So to answer that question, yes, anytime that a deck has to be waterproof, um, if you have a living quarter underneath the deck, uh, it would be. Uh, mandatory to use some kind of PVC that is protected and open up with it. A lot of times you'll see like a Trex, if there's nothing underneath that needs to be protected, uh, nothing that needs to be waterproof, you'll see it's the Trex, uh. A lot of times in those kind of situations, but for this, what we're having, you know, areas above and beneath, uh, that need to be protected.
Thank you.
Brian's previous life was a, was in the roofing business, so he, he knows, he knows his stuff with this.
My good, certified, yeah. Yeah, certified with that. Thank you. Item C twenty-two dash one forty-eight. Uh, they're gonna be called, yeah, Kobe Wilson.
Yes, sir. Nope, I don't need to do any introduction. Kobe, take it.
Yeah, good afternoon, Kobe Wilson, uh, Engineering Division. So the item on the agenda today is for a federal aid agreement with UDOT to receive, uh, federal money. To help with the reconstruction of our Lancer Way project out here in front of City Hall between twenty-seven hundred west. And thirty-two hundred west. Um, as you may recall, uh, this project, we've been working on for quite a while. And as far as trying to get funding and get a plan, we're currently working on the environmental document right now. We anticipate the document should be complete in October and once that document's complete, then that enables us to move forward with. Uh, design and pre-construction engineering activities. So this federal aid agreement is to allow us to receive, uh, the federal money from UDOT. Um, by way of reminder, we applied for federal funding a couple of different times and we have just under six million dollars of federal funding. That will be awarded to this project. Um, typically that federal funding requires a match from the local government. Um, in this particular instance, we have been able to work with UDOT to secure additional funding. We have applied for and will receive about two point two million dollars of, um, transit. Uh, transportation investment funds from the state. Um, and in working with UDOT, we've asked them if essentially we can use the state money to fulfill our federal obligation match. And vice versa, use the federal money to fulfill our local government match on the state funds and they said absolutely. So we cannot use federal funds to match federal funds or state funds to match state funds. But they are allowing us to use the state funds to match the federal funds and vice versa. So essentially at this point, um. If we, our estimate is about eight million dollars for this project and, uh, we will not, uh, have a local government match for the project. We receive the two different funding sources. So this particular agreement is just for the federal, uh, component of that. So this agreement will essentially authorize the city to enter this agreement and allow us to move forward with hiring design and construction engineering consultants. To get this project moving. Right now we're looking at a design schedule of twenty twenty-three. Um, we have quite a bit of right away we have to acquire for this project, which will likely take anywhere from six to ten months. So there's a good chance actual construction might not start till the spring of twenty twenty-five.
Any question for you? None? Well, you did a good job, buddy.
Thank you.
Alright, uh, item number eight, consent agenda, uh, gonna be Steve Dell. The resolution, twenty-two dash one forty-nine.
Thanks, sir, and Steve won't be giving that. He's the one that always writes these up, but we, we don't let him loose to come over to this meeting, so.
Alright.
Um, just kidding, not that Steve can come anytime he wants, but, uh. So this is a, they're pretty typical warranty deed in public utility. He's, it doesn't have any cost, but if you'd like to have, uh, Toby come up, we could come up. Or have him come up and talk about it. Oh, oh, good.
Yeah, good. Nothing special, right?
No.
Alright, communications, the intern project right here.
Okay, very good. Yes, thank you. So we're gonna have Steve, uh, pastorate. I know it seems like we make Steve do all the communications items all the time, right? We're just giving him this one too, but Steve actually had the, the pleasure of, uh, kind of guiding the interns this year. So that's why he has the pleasure, I guess he's considering it of presenting the, the intern update for the summer.
Actually, I did appreciate the opportunity, uh, to work with some, actually some great interns. This summer and had the opportunity to work on some fun projects with them. And so, uh. This presentation, just to kind of give you an overview of, of those projects and you can see them listed here. I will, I'll, uh, talk about each of these individually. And really the intent was to, um. Uh, work on what we refer to as placemaking items. So these could be anything from like physical improvements to actual events. That help, um, make the city a more, uh, attractive and livable place. And so the, the first one was, uh, what was referred to as Family Week. It was a series of activities. That one of the interns, uh, worked on and I have to give her kudos. She put a lot of time and, and effort into. Advertising and, and, and getting, uh, the venues lined up for this, but it was basically a. Uh, meant to be a, a week of activities centered around families. So for example, one evening was free swimming at the fitness center. And a ice cream social that happened just before movie, uh, movie night in the park. So, uh, you'll see on some of these. Events, we, uh, tried to align them with other activities happening. So you already had kind of a built-in crowd, if you will. So, um, and we saw a great turnout for many of these events. Uh, another project that's actually, these have been ordered were, as, as with everything else, there are some, uh. A supply chain delays as far as getting these, but the, um. One of the interns, uh, had the idea of having these concrete chess tables and benches. And so, uh, we have three of these showing up in Centennial Park and then the, the Promenade Park just outside City Hall. And hopefully get those here within a, a month or so. Uh, this one's fairly significant and working with our, our Parks Department, you can see this is, uh, looking to the south. You can see just, uh, south of the tennis courts there, there's that kind of, uh, patch where the grass has been removed. Is, uh, an RC track. And so you may have called, uh, hearing Nancy talk about. Uh, inside the fitness center, they've had some tournaments for, um, RC tournaments within the fitness center. And so this will actually be. A, an outdoor track, so it's about fifty by ninety. It would have a number of obstacles that, uh, that people can use. And so now, um. Not just limited to inside, you can now have, um, RC, an RC track on the outside. And that's being worked on right now as far as getting, uh, acquiring the different boulders and other obstacles that will go, um, go into this, uh, track. Uh, another one is, uh, actually just south of the fitness center or the Centennial Park. So this image here on the left is, it's fifty-six hundred west. And this is the southwest corner of Centennial Park. So if you, uh, if you can visualize, you go back here. There are a few homes that are between the park and the fast food restaurants that are to the south. And, uh, none of those homes actually face the street. There's actually a precast wall along that section of road. You can see the two images there to the right. Um, the, the wall is pretty old. It's, it's basically just a, you know, battleship gray cinder block wall. And, uh, and in this case, behind the sidewalk, so there's no park strip, you just have curb and gutter and then the sidewalk. And then there's about four feet. Between the sidewalk and the wall and it, and it's, you just have weeds essentially growing there. So part of this project is. And again, I appreciate Public Works' help here is, is tearing out, um, all of the, the weeds in that space and putting down. Uh, most likely rock in that space. And then painting the wall, a- and then in addition to that, a section of that would actually have a mural, um, on that wall. And so we're still, uh, zeroing in on what the mural would be, but on the far right. Um, the, the idea would be, and this is something the intern came up with, is the idea of having a, a child kind of pulling back the curtain, if you will. And so the, the, um, the mural will be off to the right of that. So the idea is just kind of, kind of peeking behind the curtain. What we're leaning towards now, and again, we'll, uh, we're, uh, zooming in on hopefully a final product here shortly would be, uh, maybe a historical photo. Of, or a historical image of the city. Uh, here's another one here along, uh, Mountain View Corridor. So you may have noticed we have this entry monument. Uh here's another one here along uh Mountain View Corridor, so you may have noticed, we have this entry monument. That's uh just south of fifty-four hundred south on the east side of Mountain View Corridor. And so this was a project, actually some previous interns were done. And so as part of this effort would be to uh put in some landscaping immediately around the entry monument. This will mostly be uh rock type landscaping with uh some trees, it would be um as more of as a backdrop to this. And the idea, these would be very much drought tolerant uh type trees, it would be. Said again as a backdrop to this entry monument. So another event type um place making project that we worked on with the interns was um. We partnered with a group called the Moondie Project, they're a nonprofit that they do. Uh music lessons uh for um lower income kids. Uh but in this case, they also do some what they call music workshops, and so as part of. In in two instances, as part of our hump day buffet, you'll notice we often will have a band and we have the. The food trucks there and and sometimes some other activities, uh they set up a. Attempt with some activities for kids to learn about instruments, and then also just before one of the West Valley. Uh Symphony Concerts at the Cultural Center, they also set up a booth, and you can see here some. Pictures, the one on the left was at the Hump Town or a Hump Day Buffet uh there on the left, and then the one on the right is. At the Cultural Center, so again, uh engaging kids and learning about uh instruments and music. Now, this is one, the last two here are ones that need a little more um. Uh flushing out, but uh we got a good start on, so one of the interns identified a um. A project where we would look at the streetlights within Fairborn Station, so the image on the bottom left would be. A map showing where all those the existing streetlights are. And these are already lights that are a little more decorative than we have in other places in the city, so you already have. Uh kind of a Fairborn Station logo at the base, and they have more of a decorative cage on them. But would be to do some banner arms with some um art uh artwork on those banner arms, now. The the flag you see off to the right was just a conceptual, so it won't be exactly that, but it would be the idea of having some. Artwork that's attached to the streetlights. Within Fairborn Station, so again, here we'll. Excuse me, need to um again, get a little more detail about what the artwork would look like. And then finally, uh here, uh here just a little bit to our. To the to the east of us, you have the intersection at I two fifteen and thirty fifth south. And one of the interns uh looked into doing another similar entry monument uh just right here at this location, so if you see in this. Image here on the top left, you already have quite a bit of landscaping that the city was able to place in that area. And so this is pretty high traffic areas, as you have folks getting off two fifteen and then kind of waiting at that light to uh to either travel south. Or or in either direction, really, and so uh this intern ended uh talking with you dot and understanding what. What would need to happen in order to place that within within that uh the landscape space. And uh also contacted a a a local. Uh firm that does this type of work to get an estimate on that, and unfortunately with the with steel prices the way they are right now, it was a little. A little uh uh high on the price, but uh hoping that that may be a project we can tackle in the future. So again, that's just a quick summary of the projects that were either completed, or in some cases, some of them are still in in the works.
How big for that horseshoe?
How how big is it? So to to give you, it's it's pretty much, and I know this is maybe not the best uh image to give your perspective there, but if you've seen the one off of. The Mountain View Corridor, it'd be the same scale of that as that one.
Let's say West Valley City on it, I can't.
It's I know, it's sorry, the image, the lighting's not great, it's unity pride progress, and then you also have the city logo and kind of either side of of that.
Very cool. Any question for him? Thank you, Steve.
Thank you.
Council calendar, any question? If not, move into your business potential. Future agendas. Item, sorry.
Uh I have a minor one, sir.
Okay.
So in this year, for the first time uh in many years, we didn't float. The council's desire and and. Uh I would say that that was pretty successful, I think it accomplished what it's kind of asked for, and uh. Now, we're trying to consider how or whether to approach it next year, and so we just thought we would. Bring that up to you guys here in this forum, so if we choose to do another float next year, one of the perennial problems we always had with this when we were doing it was. Where to store the previous year's one, so. Weather damage, especially to the platform, you know, the mechanics, the deck and all that sort of thing were happening, every year, obviously, the float itself would be changed either majorly or minorly. But we always had this issue of where to park the thing. So if we do it in the upcoming year, Modern Display has offered to do that, it would be somewhere in the neighborhood of twenty thousand dollars for that. Plus, the I'm not in addition to twenty thousand dollars to cover the storage through the year and for the upgrade, at least at some base level. Of what the float would be, which for reference, twenty thousand dollars has been roughly the cost for twenty plus years or so. From an inflation at least look standpoint, that it's not that expensive, if that makes any uh or has any bearing on the on the. Request, the other item that would be of. Interest to you guys as we're talking about this is, we ran three parades this year. And in that time, we put about a hundred hours of staff time, so. It's not a hard cost, it's a soft cost, but the soft cost does include paying overtime, that sort of thing, probably of a harder. Question there is, it's it's actually tough to get people free on those sorts of weekends in the summer for overtime, we also had. About fifty hours of donated volunteer time too, so I give you all of those sorts of overarching. Points of data, if you will, just to sort of ask your opinion, should we do this again next year, should we keep it at the same level, should we expand it, should we? Contracted, what are your thoughts?
Yeah, any question, I mean, and then you wanna. Bring it up to a table?
Yeah, it's not something I feel like we need to bring up again at another meeting, I think it was just kind of a quick enough question, figured you guys would.
Well, me here, when, I'm thinking about that public work, we have the place to store it there.
Can we, we don't, that's that was the problem for all those years, is they they had a Quonset hut that they used to put it into, the Quonset hut's been taken out. As part of the various changes that have happened over the years, and we don't have an inside spot to keep it, that would that wouldn't interfere with operations. So that's why we have that dilemma in the first place.
So we don't have any no buildings we can res- we can store it?
No, I mean, there are a couple of other places I could go explore, but they're pretty tough too, like, for example, we have a warehouse out on the west side of town that we use a lot of. Uh that we use for a lot of police storage for um evidence and cases, that sort of thing, makes it a little difficult. Both in terms of access and space. Uh might go out and take a look at the New Parks Building, but it would be pretty tough, is the point.
What's the cost of building it without?
Without the storage, about twenty thousand dollars, so yeah, that's actually a good question, the storage, the storage part of this isn't really a big part of it.
It's very much the same.
Yeah, yeah.
What's the difference between the storage and the refreshing that they would do, what's?
Meaning, uh if we rebuild?
Uh you said that it it would come with some refreshing.
Yeah.
So what's, if we just found a place to store it, what's that?
I see what you're saying, so like, let's say we stored it outside and we took some like damage to it, would there be a big difference in the? In the reverb, is that kind of what you're asking?
Like, my neighbor has a big shed that have stored. Floats before. Um, you know? We we pay uh somebody else to store for ten thousand versus somebody else twenty thousand.
Oh, well, like I was saying to Dawn, this the for for modern display, they're really not getting a lot out of this for storage, but they're really doing is booking our. Business for next year on the on the on the.
That's that's what I want to know is, what's the restore cost versus the store?
So the restore cost could be anywhere depending on how complicated you want to get with the float design, which we've done everything in the past from. Get a matching grant and go gone whole hog, and it was thirty, forty, fifty thousand dollars. Or barely changing the color of the leaves on it, and it was ten thousand dollars, so. I would say that on probably a normal basis, you're anywhere between fifteen and twenty-five, that's why we gave the twenty thousand figure.
But modern display kind of throws in the storage.
Basically, that's the, for them, it's a it's a good deal because it kind of gets us committed a year in advance to do a a a float rehab. Whereas if we're not, maybe we get rid of the float altogether, and they don't have business next year.
How much we spent last year, ten thousand?
Twenty.
Twenty thousand.
Yeah, I think it was twenty and some change.
And how many people stand on that floor?
Standing?
Yes, standing, last time.
Three, good question, I was gonna say three, four, five, anybody remember? Maybe you guys did, somewhere in there.
Because I'm the reason I'm asking you that question, because I. And I have some kind of idea, maybe give you, I know, ask you your your feedback, as for other communities, you know, we have multiple communities here in our city, so maybe ask them to. Do some kind of contribution, maybe s- spend some time or like hours, go to work and we. And give them a chance for one person can represent your community, can stand in on the flow, you know what I'm saying, something like that.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yes, save us a little bit of money, but also give them a chance to participate in that uh event.
Yeah.
You know?
And we've done that in the past uh as well, kind of depends on what the theme is.
Right, right.
That sort of thing, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely.
We participated in three parades this past year.
Yeah, Days of Forty-seven, our own, and Magna.
There are opportunities to expand that, I guess, that.
Oh, yeah.
More soft costs to.
Yeah, yeah.
Exactly, finding people to be there on on the Fourth of July, you know, give up your Fourth of July. To. In a parade.
You could probably, I think the most we've done in the past, and don't quote me on this, because now we're talking ten, fifteen years ago, but. We've probably done like half a dozen parades in a in a single year, if we're really getting crazy. And that really is only limited by, Lars just kind of alluded to it, how many holiday weekends are there really, you know, there's twenty-four, there's the four. Some of the some of the uh. Community festivals are a little off of those days, like ours, or like Taylorsville, so that's really kind of been the limiting factor.
Do we participate in the uh? I can't remember the name, for the Days of Forty-seven Parade, they put all the floats in the.
Area at the South Town, something.
Yeah, to view the floats up close.
I don't know, maybe, I remember. Okay, apparently, yes.
Okay, what what are you?
Are we doing a parade next year, let's start there.
Well, uh we didn't do a parade for a few years, and then obviously it was kind of kicked by. Covid, and then we started back up here two, three, four years ago. And it's been our um just internal staff plan that the. Council's direction is to do a parade, so the short answer would be yes, unless council said they didn't want to.
If. If Modern Display was doing the rehab, refreshing of it, they would have their people do it, right?
Yeah.
I know I've tried to build a float as a volunteer. And uh.
It can be done.
It can be done, and it got done, but.
Right.
There were four or five volunteers that. Put in a lot more time than everybody else.
Right.
But on here, uh my hometown have a lot of talented people too, you can give the project to them.
Well, they sometimes get their own projects on the Fourth of July.
One way or other, we're gonna do it, you know.
Yeah, I I think our standing assumption is, once we did it, the council probably want us to continue it again, unless there was some. Which.
And I would say, let's do it, let's let Modern Display, you know.
Okay.
Pay the same money we paid this year, have them rehab it, and try to schedule some more parades.
Why don't we pay that money to the home, my hometown? Instead of pay to modern.
You have a golden float.
I did, I did not, when I was in the uh the prison of the Vietnamese community, we used one the house. When the houses um, yeah, uh with the community, and we spend hours and hours, I did. I personally put some hours in there.
Yeah.
Yeah, I did throw over to my hometown, like give them money to do it. Why why we pay someone outside the uh system?
Well, the reason you pay outside the system, and it's a good question, but you really basically are making two choices, if you want to make it a volunteer project for the. For the purpose of having volunteers involved, that's great, um but you would not have the. The um, let's call it uh contracted. Product that you're buying, if you're from Modern Display, if you pay the twenty thousand dollars Modern Display, then I know for sure you're gonna have a float.
Have a show in time.
Yep.
Time, right.
Yeah, yeah, I think we should keep it as simple as possible, I don't I don't have a strong opinion, I don't, if we have a float or not have a float. But if we do have a float, let's keep it simple.
Yeah, yeah, so see, like, everybody want.
Okay.
Wants to have the flow, yeah.
Okay.
Good, keep going.
That's the only item I had.
And and I. My opinion, I wouldn't do more than three parades, I think for staffing, I I think. Two's probably enough, you know, West Valley and Days of Forty-seven, but.
Okay.
But that's my. We could do a lot of them, but I just think it's it's a drain on staffing for holidays, rather than doing stuff with their families on those days if we can help.
So many, how many you said, two or three?
Two or three, and I think. Ours and Days of Forty-seven would be the two, and then if we want to do Magna or Taylorsville. That would be an option, but I, again, staffing is my biggest concern.
If if, you know, if if those other cities put a float in our parade, then I think it'd make sense to put one in theirs, but. I don't see any of them in our parade.
No, and being, we're one of the early ones. Right, so maybe uh. Maybe that opportunity would arise in the in the future, and I can see the, I can see the point of that, I mean, if we. If they're gonna ask us to reciprocate, or we're asking them to reciprocate, that might be a little more motivation, but yes, to to Scott's point, it's not an easy thing to. Stop these things, so.
I've walked the parade many times with uh cities. Flow, it's the Fourth of July especially.
Yeah.
Just getting the driver there is.
Well, how about, yeah, how about this, so it seems like we got a pretty clear direction that we want to have the flow, and then we'll. Staff it as available and kind of plan on the three, and if it's one above below or one above or whatever, depending on availability, we go that way. Does that sound good?
Yeah.
Okay, okay, good, thank you.
Anything else for that item? Potential future agenda items, I mean, once, once soon. Have something, or no, if not, we're gonna move to item number B, uh council reports. None, the group four, C, we're gonna review uh RDA meeting and FDA meeting. Any question about that? Yeah.
Yeah, hopefully, just a budget.
It's okay, right, not a big deal, all right, um. We not, we don't have any uh course session tonight, right?
No, sir.
Okay, but the the last motion for this study meeting. Thank you, so uh. Uh, oh, those in this favorite uh this motion, please, AI?
Hi.
Hi. Oh, you're John, thank you.